Morning my people, my people. How are we doing this morning?
Fine, thanks.
My name is Stephen.
That's better, everyone? What about us, mate?
Both.
Hope that worship was good for us to here on Zoom. Or for those who were of different congregation, like Andy Sally. Tommy heard that you're not feeling too well. Hope that the sound of my voice will provide some healing. As it usually does. Think that's medically proven. On Tuesday, we didn't have our usual Bible class. We had a prayer meeting of sorts for primarily the end dollars, but then I also found out that the marshals had lost. Sister Marshall lost her sister, so it was on her behalf as well. Just encouraging us to continue praying. To continue to bring these members up to God in prayer. They need support, they need they need God's comfort. So let us not, let us not forget having had the prayer meeting and and moving past that they still need our encouragement. They still need us to be there for them. So going to be jumping back into our study. We had essentially a week break. Let me get my screen up. Alright, before we jump into things, password.
Peter.
Ah, Sister Smith, you never disappoint. Go ahead.
The way of escape.
Hold on, is my volume low? Yes, it is. Go ahead, Sister Smith, I could barely hear you.
The way of escape.
Alright, leaving nothing, nothing to be wanted, that's correct. I'm gonna jot that down, Sister Smith, on fire as always. Alright, so for those, just a reminder to those who already know which team they're supposed to be in. If they can just put team name before their name. That will be appreciated. I'm going to do a quick recap of what happened on Sunday. And then we're going to jump in to today's lesson. So as per usual, the topic of our study is lost, a case study. Where we're looking at Luke chapter 15, the parable of the lost things. Being the coin, the sheep and the son. And we're doing it from a three-point approach. We're looking at the diagnosis of the issues, of the struggles, of the conditions, of the characters in these, in this parable. We're correlating those conditions to to ourselves are these things that we struggle with or can struggle with in the future. And then finally, we prescribing solutions that were practical solutions that we can use. So that we can get over these struggles. And we've been looking at the sheep for the past, I believe fifteen classes. And we've been looking at scatterbrain syndrome initially. And we moved on to bark bug and bark bug is where we see hesitation and course correction. Coming up in our lives as a result of doubt or worry. And we've been looking at some prescriptive methods. The one we're currently looking at is the pill of post-promises. And the pill of post-promises is founded on the fact that we recognize God's willingness to make and keep promises and God's ability to carry out whatever promise he makes. That is the hinge of the pill of post-promises. So we know from scripture that anything that God says he is going to do, he will do and he is able to do. And we started looking at some scriptures to analyze some of these promises made by God. Looking at where he requires us to be for those promises to be fulfilled and for us to reap the benefits. And also if the lack of promises or fulfillment of promises in our lives is as a result of God not keeping his promises or of us not doing our part in getting to where we need to be to access these promises. Reinforcing that these promises aren't earned by us. They aren't deserved by us. But because of God's grace and mercy, he still gives to us freely. However, where the gift is given, where the gift can be picked up. It is dependent on, on us getting where God tells us to be. So think of it like a FedEx delivery. But God did say that it not coming to your doorstep, it's coming to the FedEx office. Despite the fact that you did not purchase the gift, if you don't go down to the FedEx office, you won't get access to the gift. So God is saying, hey, you're not buying the gift, but you have to do something to access it. So we're going to be looking, this is, we looked at some powerful passages. And on last week, we looked at my favorite passage, first Corinthians chapter 10 verse 13. And we saw, we saw some of the conditions surrounding temptation and testing. And what it, what is required of us as individuals to access the blessing of God. So we're going to be looking lastly at Psalm chapter 37. We're going, before we start, just going to ask two readers. Alright, Sister Smith, you're yellow and Brother David, you're green. You can start, Sister Smith.
Trust in the Lord and do good. So shalt thou dwell in the land and verily thou shalt be fed.
Delight thyself also in the Lord and he shall give thee the desires of thine heart.
Alright, thank you. Well read, well read. Alright, so this this passage is, I think, at least verse four is a fairly frequent passage. Um, let me see the hands of those who have heard, rather, let me see the hands of those who have never heard verse four before. Alright, so safe to say everyone in here has, has heard. Delight thyself also in the Lord and he shall give thee the desires of thy heart. Let me see the hands of those who have never heard verse three preceding verse four. When, when used. So those who just hear verse four, but don't usually hear verse three before verse four, just raise your hands, something. Okay, so everybody has heard, okay, I guess I'm the only one in that scenario. So yeah, so the first time I actually looked up this passage specifically, I looked at verse. Hold on, sorry. So yes, I was familiar with verse four, but I wasn't particularly familiar with verse three. And once again, in looking at the promises of God, the conditions are established from verse three. So the delight thyself also in the Lord presumes from just that verse, that that is what will give you the desires of your heart. But verse three lends some clarity as to exactly what this entire promise is, is encompassed, is compacted with. Alright, so we're going to jump into the verses specifically and see what the writer David is trying to share with us. So the first verse says, trust in the Lord and do good. So shalt thou dwell in the land and verily thou shalt be fed. Trust here, batac, it is a verb that we've seen in a lot of David Psalms. And it means to hide for refuge. And we know that hide means to run to. So figuratively speaking, it means to trust, to be confident or sure. So one of, one phrase that litters the Psalms is trust in the Lord. So that is something that David reiterates to the reader time and time again. Trust in the Lord, trust in the Lord, run to God for refuge, be confident in God. And here we see the first promise that is required for us to get access to these promises. Trust in God, run to God for refuge, be confident in God. Have faith in God, that is the first ground that we see established to get access to the benefits that are brought up in this passage. So we see that first, the second thing David says is to do good. So to do here means literally to do or to make. So to carry out an action or to bring something into being. And here he's saying good. Good here meaning a good thing. Something that is beneficial or something that is morally good. So David is saying that we need to trust in God, we need to have faith in God, we need to go to God for refuge. And also we need to do good. And good here can be morally good, can be doing beneficial things or doing good things to others. So two conditions there established initially, trust in the Lord and do good. And then it says, so shalt thou dwell in the land and verily thou shalt be fed. So here is a conjunction. I've seen a lot of conjunctions being brought up in these lessons. And the conjunction so essentially means and as a result. So we're seeing trust in the Lord and do good. And as a result, thou shalt dwell in the land and verily thou shalt be fed. What does David mean here when he says thou shalt dwell in the land and thou, verily thou shalt be fed? Does that mean that people are going to bring us food? Is David being literal here when he speaks to that? And what land is he referring to? Let us see what, what is being said. But shalt dwell, shakan. It means to reside or permanently stay. So essentially to have one's house. And land here means from the root, meaning to be firm, the earth. So the word land here is, it means earth and it comes from the root word, which means to be firm. Verily lends support to the idea of land. So land means to be firm. And then David says, and verily thou shalt be fed. Verily here means firmness, security. And shalt be fed means to tend a flock, to shepherd. So as we know, David, when he was growing up, his, um, his job was that of a shepherd. So he took care of sheep. And that upbringing comes out in a lot of David's language. So a lot of things David says, David will say in a figurative manner. Liking in to individuals that sheep are making sheep comparisons, making shepherd comparisons, et cetera. So when David says here, thou shalt dwell in the land and verily thou shalt be fed. David is comparing us to sheep. So the benefits that we are garnering would be similar benefits to sheep. This comparison, of course, has God as the shepherd. So God being the shepherd, we need to trust in him. When we trust in God the shepherd and we do good. We shall dwell in the land and we shall be fed. So the dwelling in the land here speaks to having permanent residence. Permanent residence in regards to safety. So for sheep, having a particular place to stay for sheep is, is not, is not something that outside of a shepherd can be found because sheep are low on the food chain. So most predators look for sheep as food. The idea of sheep being able to stay somewhere permanently is more, is lost on sheep because once a predator finds them, they have no means to protect themselves. So when God is telling us that when we trust in God and we do good, we shall have permanent residence on, on the earth in this sphere. It is likening us to sheep in the sense that we will have protection from God. We don't have to worry about where we are because God is protecting us. And then it goes on to say, verily, with security, with assurance, you will be fed. And fed here is not just restricted to food. It is being tended to, taken care of, you shall be taken care of. And as I've said, to tend a flock, so God will take care of us. And of course, we see the similar kind of language in Psalm 23. It said, the Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. That is the same idea that takes, is, is being reinforced there. I will not want because God is tending to me. So if we trust in the Lord and if we do good, then God will protect us and God will take care of us. That is essentially what is being brought up in verse three. Any questions, any queries or is it clear? Alright, seems to be clear. Moving on. Then we jump down to the second verse. Delight thyself also in the Lord and he shall give thee the desires of thine heart. So the word also here is letting us know that this is alongside what was said before. So that is why I said a lot of the times we use this passage halfway. So we just use the delight yourself in the Lord and, and then bam, desires of the heart. But delighting yourself also is alongside trusting in the Lord and doing good. So here is another benefit that God provides. But to access that benefit, one has to be doing the conditions that were established beforehand. So delight in the Lord is not sufficient in and of itself to provide for, to get the desires of your heart essentially. Mind you, to delight yourself in the Lord would call for you to trust and to, to do good. So I guess it is just reiterating the package deal. Alright, so it's delight. The word delight means to be soft or pliable, to be soft or pliable. And by that extension, it means to be happy about or to take exquisite delight. To be happy about or to take exquisite delight. But this is this one for me was a little ambiguous. So like what, what do you mean to be happier, to be happy about or to take exquisite delight? How do you take exquisite delight in the Lord? It, it seemed, it, it was, it was bowling me over for a bit. So I, I, I look at the preposition that is used alongside this verb. So the delight that should take place is in the Lord. And the preposition indicates inclusion, location or position within limits. So exquisite delight should be in God. Should be located where God is. And whilst I'm not entirely sure what or how that delight comes across in our actual behavior. I started to think about the things that I delight or take exquisite delight in. And a sweet football game, a ballgame with, with just nice exquisite delight. Hot pizza, woo! With, with the cheese a drip, Hawaiian, of course. Guy poking up on the pizza, then it's not really pizza. Unless of course, the, the vegetarians and, and those who don't eat pork. But yeah, man, ah. And when I think of, of how my emotions are are, are set on fire, for want of a better word, when I'm thinking about these things, there is, I can almost feel the joy. It cannot stay within me. I won't have a straight face, the excitement will be tangible. People will know that I am excited when I have exquisite delight in something. It's not something that I can restrain, it's not something that I want to restrain. I want people to know that I am excited about something. That is, that is how my exquisite delight is seen. When I look at the things that I take exquisite delight in. I'm sure we all have our own things that we can, that we have exquisite delight in. For some people is cheesecake, some people is ice cream. But I'm sure we can all attest to the fact of having delight within us that radiates externally. So either with a smile from cheek to cheek. Or make up noise, I remember once, can't forget this scenario, Chris. Chris bought a cupcake at pastry passion. She was in the backseat of the vehicle and she opened the cupcake and she took a bite. And the, the sounds that Chris made as she ate that cupcake, you would swear is the greatest delicacy on the planet. I never needed to ask her if she was delighted in the cupcake because it was clear from the sound that she was making, oh, it was, it was. The delight was clear. And that, that was the kind of imagery that I, I found to be associated with this idea of delighting ourselves in the Lord. Is our delight in God tangible? Can you see it? Can you look at me and say, hey, this person here is excited. Something has made this person happy. There is joy within this person that cannot be restricted. We need to get there to access the second part of this passage. Um, as the David asks me, what type of cupcake? I don't, I don't know, David, it was a fancy cupcake. It was a fancy cupcake, that's all I know. I have a bag of pretty, pretty stuff on it, but whether the flavor or whatever, I, I don't know, I never asked those questions. All I know is Chris said that there was apparently some, some alcohol in it. So I don't know if that was, that played a role in, in the, in the sound effects. But yes, so. Delight thyself in the Lord also in the Lord. And he shall give thee the desires of thine, thine heart. And this is of course, the path of the passage that excites us. Shall give here means to give, bestow or bring forth, so no figurative language here. Something shall be given to you. Whether God bestows it upon you, whether God brings it forth through creation or what other means. The desires. Desire here means essentially a request. Which further means desire or petition. So a lot of the times when we hear the idea desire, we think to the innermost. Um, wants, like what is within me that I really want? But it, it's not limited to that. It could literally be the things that you ask. So your petition, your request of God. So it's more powerful than just the idea that, oh, you know, God knows that deep down inside I want a job. So God will give me a job, no petitions, asking God for things. He will give you the requests of your heart and heart. Here being the heart and as we see in numerous situations, it isn't limited to just the feelings. But it consists of the will, even the intellect. So God will give us the desires of our feelings or will and our intellect. And I, I always said, boy, how this passage work if my desires and things that I should be desiring? How, how, what, how, what is the condition there? And then having looked through this passage, I realized how clear it was. If the things that give me exquisite delight are the things that are usually the things that I desire. But in my physical life, the things that give me exquisite delight, football, pizza, those are the things I desire. Those are the things that I would request. If my desires, if the things that I request, if the things that I deeply want are now in the Lord. Then I won't have to question whether these are things that God will give me because the desires of my heart will have been aligned with the Lord. So this is God essentially letting us know that you see the desires that you have that are outside of me? Don't think that you're going to get them. Because you first have to find your desires within me. You have to first find exquisite delight within me. Then the things that you want will automatically start to be shaped by the things that are within me. Because that is where you're finding your delight. You're not going to have to worry now about whether you will get the desires that you want or whether those desires are wrong or right. Because you have allowed the delight within me to shape the desires that you have. Alright, so David says, um, is there anything that circumscribes these desires? So once I delight, he will give me whatever I desire, once not sinful. How do we know what desires are outside of the Lord? David, as per usual, with a potent question. Alright, so, um, so David says, is there anything that circumscribes these desires? Um, I would say that any scripture that speaks to God allowing us of, one of the first things that'd bring to mind is Paul's, Paul's request to God. So I would presume that Paul delighted himself in the Lord. This is me going out on a limb. And Paul made a request to God. And he said, and God told him, um, my grace is sufficient. I don't want to stretch and say that that was an answer to his request. So because I know Paul had asked to to take it away. And God had said, my grace is sufficient. So I don't know if that is now a scenario where my delight in God should facilitate, should be for grace and mercy. So that should be my desire, if it's God saying that I need to alter my desire to be grace and mercy and contentment rather than the thing that I'm asking for and not getting. Um, I can't specifically tell you how tangible the carrying out of the giving Um, I can't specifically tell you how tangible the carrying out of the giving is or the bestowing. Um, what I can say, what I can say is that. The, the more we delight in God, is the less tangible our desires will be. A lot of the things that David writes about within the Psalms. You recognise the things that he asks God, God for. Outside of the protection from enemies, et cetera. A lot of the things are the things that God has already guaranteed. So God's, God never leaving or forsaking us. God forgiving us, God, um, giving us salvation, God giving us strength when we're weary. I feel like the more we begin to delight in God, is the more the desires of our heart, the things that we ask for, the things that we. Petition God for will start to take on less of a things and stuff kind of delight. And take on more of a, um, intangible sort of request. So God, um, give me strength to go through the circumstance that I'm, I'm going through. God give me comfort during this particular time. Um, that, so that's my, that's my understanding of it, David. Um, but in regards to. In regards to specifically, that if I'm not getting something. Is that evidence that I'm not delighting in God? I can't say definitively, I can't say that definitively. However, I believe that you upon introspection will be able to at least definitively say whether you're delighting in the Lord. So you may not be able to say that the reason you're not getting what you're getting is because you're not delighting in God. But you should be able to highlight whether you are delighting in God or not. And if you're not delighting in God, then make it, um, make it your priority to delight in God. Not so much to get the thing that you're desiring, but to allow God to change your desires. Delighting, as I said, delighting in the Lord. Means to, to take exquisite delight. And more often than not, the things we desire are the things that provide us with exquisite delight. So if we start to find, try to find exquisite delight in the Lord. Then our desires will start to be in the Lord. And majority, if not all of the ones that I have seen, the desires within the Lord. Are desires that have already been guaranteed from God. So, um. Let me, let me see what else he said, just in case, before I tell you that that is all I can answer for the moment. Um, isn't that sort of like me telling Sean that I will give him the desires of his heart? Once he ensures that he desires what I want him to desire? Sorry for being difficult, alright, um. I know, I'll make sure that, alright, so he said, you'll give Sean what he desires. Once he ensures that what he desires is what I want him to desire. Uh, interesting, interesting. Um, I wouldn't say that specifically. Why? Because I feel like the order or priority of, um, the activity here is, is skewed. So the focus that Sean would have is that. I, I should desire what David wants me to desire and then I will get that. And not so much on the why. Why do we need to delight ourselves in the Lord? Why should the desires of my heart be the desires or desires in the Lord? I think that is where we need to focus to get a better understanding. So rather than looking on the conditionality of the this, then that, let us look at the why. Why should I delight myself in the Lord? Why should my desires align themselves to godliness? Why should I find exquisite delight in godliness? That is where I think if we, if we answer that question properly, then we will think less about. What it is that we get after having that mentality. And we'll recognise that just in having that mentality, we have already gotten so much. There are so many passages that speak to us about changing our mindset, about thinking on certain things. About leaving behind the fleshly and going after the spiritual. And this passage reinforces how to get to where we need to get. By finding the delight in the Lord. A lot of the fleshly desires that we struggle with. Result as a, because we don't try to change the desire. We just try to fight it, we just try to evade it, we just try to resist it. So we say, okay, I want to do this, I want to do this, I want to do this. Let me, let me put up walls, let me stop this, let me whatever, whatever. But we don't try to get or to shift our desire to the spiritual side of things. There is a passage that speaks to, um, I don't remember which passage it is, but the idea of cleaning. Cleaning out a house, I don't know if it was demons or evil spirits or whatever, where it says, clean out the house. And then, when, if you don't put good things there, after you clean it. Even more bad things will come. I, I, I know I'm paraphrasing this horrendously, if anybody knows the passage, feel free to, to, to inform me. But I, I'm pretty sure that that is the gist of it. That you get rid of the bad stuff, I know you have an empty house and you're not putting good things in there, so the bad stuff just come. Think a lot of the times when we're dealing with sin, when we're dealing with our selfish desires. We look, we, we try to, to clean the house. But we don't focus as much on putting good desires there. In finding delight in new, in the, in the way God would want us to find delight. Um. And one of the, the reasons why the passage starts, the verse three starts with trust in the Lord. Is exactly aligned with what you would tell Sean, David. You at this age knows better, know better for Sean than Sean knows for himself. So for Sean to align himself with his own desires are likely to lead him in the wrong direction. If Sean were to decide, for example, what he's going to eat for breakfast, lunch and dinner. God forbid his vegetables drop in there, God forbid his fruits, the man probably eat candy, pizza, chocolate, ice cream. All those days. And as far as his heart is, um, is sure, these are wonderful things. But you as his parent, you being the adult, you being wiser than he, you actually know what is best for him. So in trusting in you. In aligning his desires with what you would have him desire. He's not doing what is in your best interest now, David, he's doing is what, what is in his best interest. Similarly as Christians, if we get the trust in God first. And that, I love how David aligns the way he puts these verses together. They just flow so wonderfully. If we trust in God, if we recognise that he knows better than us. That he knows what he is doing, that all I need to do is follow what he says. Then when God tells us that, hey, delight in me. Find exquisite delight in me, allow your desires to be aligned with me. Then we in that trust will recognise that, boy, God knows that these are the true delights. These are the true desires, these are the things that will bring me complete fulfillment. Why am I questioning if this is the road that I need to take? If I wholeheartedly believe that God knows best for me? The question though, and this is what David brought up, is how do I, how do I distinguish between the desires that are not sinful, but not necessarily beneficial to me? So not every desire is a sinful desire. But not every non-sinful desire is beneficial. Will God give me these desires? When I ask of him and if I'm not getting them, does that mean I'm not delighting in God? I think that's what David, was the core of David's question. And I think it boils down to, to the first part of the verse. Trusting in the Lord and doing good. I feel like when we truly get to that place where we're trusting and doing good. A lot of the questions that we ask will be answered. Through our, through the, the consequences of our action. And I'm not talking negative consequence, just the things that happen afterward. Think a lot of the times we want, we want God to answer before we trust him. We want God to do so we can trust him. We want God to give to us so we can trust him. But we're not, we're not trusting first, we're not doing good first. And that leads to now a cycle that we'll never be able to facilitate. Because if the things come after the trust and we are waiting for the thing to get us to the trust, then we'll never get there. David says, I agree with what, what the desires don't always have to be evil or sinful. This is in response to Brother Smith. The key thing is to trust God and his plan for me. So yes, David, I, I agree with that. Um, I think sometimes we ignore the fact that faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen. Think sometimes as Christians, we want to see, we want it mapped out. We want, even though God guarantees that we will get the things that we desire, we want him to specify. Okay, God, what are the things that I desire that are, will get ticked? And what are the things that will get exceeded that aren't necessarily sinful? And God, God hasn't promised us that kind of clarity. In truth, maybe if God gave us that kind of clarity, we would find a way to sabotage things even further. What we can give God thanks for however, is that he makes these promises. And as I have seen with all the promises that I've studied thus far. Doing the thing that gets us to the place to access the blessing is a blessing in and of itself. So even if we got nothing, after doing what God tells us to do. We would have gotten something from doing what God told us to do. And it's, it's, it's beautiful, it's beautiful the way God aligns the commands that he gives us, the instructions that we give us to our best interest. Nothing is done or asked of us that doesn't benefit us in the doing of it. Even before we are rewarded. And, um, it's, it's, it's amazing. It's, it's like, as I said, it's peer, a lot of parents tell children to do things and as children, we don't, we don't want to do it. Because as far as we are concerned, there are no benefits to it. And a lot of the time they have the parents sweeten the deal. So they say, okay, do this and I will give you this. But a lot of the times it's only later on in life that we realise that the doing that we were asked to do was benefiting us. The parents just throw on an extra benefit to get us to do the thing that would have benefited us in the first place. David said, um, Karate Kid watching the car. Or for those who probably never watched the original Karate Kid and only watched the Jaden Smith one, the picking up the jacket. You keep doing it, you keep doing it, you keep doing it and you're like, why God, why are you wasting my time? But you, it's only when it comes into fruition that you realise, oh, you were training me. You were building up my fortitude. You were teaching me to trust in you and know those, that the action itself provides intangible benefits that cannot be taken away. That is how God makes promises and it is, it is wonderful as a Christian to know. That that is how God takes care of me, not just through giving me things. But in my pursuit of the things that he will give me, he gives me things, he's provident and wonderful God. So that is the last passage. In the pillar of post-promises that we're looking at. Um, just some recapping points that I want us to take into consideration. Um, we have fifteen minutes, there's also a short exercise I think we can cover in the time. And then after that, we will be moving on to new passages in that of a different diagnosis. We've been on Bart book for quite some time, so I hope you're excited as I am. The pillar of post-promises, the first one is that God's promises. Oh, is it Paula, was it accident or intentional?
Accident.
Okay. And so God's promises postdate my actions. So our actions don't earn the blessings, but grant us access to them. Um, I, I brought up this particular point to remind us to not treat God like Santa Claus. As amazing a God as he is, we shouldn't sit down in our house and wait for things to drop out through our chimney. We need to do things, not just for the blessings, but because that is how God blessed us. In a, in a manner, through our action. God never leaves his post. God is always on time because he lives at work. You don't have to worry about when we need something, about the access to which we have to God. So it's not like teeth broken in your house and you call the police and you know there's a delay time. Your house burning down and you know to the fire truck, they are halfway through. And you live at Portmore. You know that you're in need and it, it, the things cannot arrive at the particular time. You're calling JPS because you don't have no light and then put you on hold for hours. Yes, this one is personal, this one is personal. Because my, my work, if light gone, that's it, I can't do nothing. And it just, it just, and then them, them, it's the same song them play while them have your hole. And, oh my gosh, yeah man, but with our God. Immediate access, immediate deliverance if he desires so. We don't have to worry about God sleeping, about God using the bathroom. About God phone battery dying, about God phone being on silent. He is always attentive to our needs, to our struggles. And that is glorious reassurance. That the most powerful, most capable individual to solve anything that we go through. Is not only microseconds away. He is watching, he is looking at us and saying, okay, I'm, I got you. You don't have to, you don't have to worry about it. He is there when we need him. My brother Smith, they're travelling like Beal, make up a little more noise. So yeah, man, God is, God never leaves his post. And God is the perfect postman, the perfect postman, because he always delivers on his promises. Perfect postman. If it isn't in your mail, then it has not been delivered. You don't have to worry about if it is, God hasn't brought it as yet. He's a perfect postman, once he says he's going to do something, it will be done. And it will be done at the right time. So don't worry, you don't have to keep checking your post, your post box, your mailbox, what is a post box? You, you don't need to keep checking your mailbox every two seconds. When it should arrive, it will arrive. And as I said, these, this is to help us with worry, this is to help us with doubt. Recognising that we have something to do can help us with the sitting down, the feeling of anxiety. Thinking that there is nothing you can do. Because God is always calling us to be better, to do better. If we focus on that, then a lot of the anxiety that we feel in helplessness will be gone through us doing things that God tells us we can do. will be gone through us doing things that God tells us we can do. Knowing that God is always there when we need him and is always on time helps us to recognize that what is the point of worrying? Because if God is going to be on time, then clearly it is not the time yet if he hasn't come. And the fact that he always delivers is reassurance. We don't need to keep calling the post office to say, where is my letter? God will deliver. So the pill of present tense, pill of past providence, pill of post promises. If we if we try to take these pills daily, they can work wonders in regards to our worry, our the course correction that we make, not knowing what the right action is. All right, we have well, seven minutes. I don't know, give me about seven minutes, nine minutes. I don't know if this can be done in that. All right. So we cannot share this exercise. But I want us to do the exercise in the next nine minutes. So we're going to spend nine minutes doing this exercise and come Tuesday. We will start class sharing this exercise. So the exercise is called Scriptural Post. And it says, select a passage of scripture that includes a promises, a promise of God that is encouraging to you. So you are going to pick a scripture, not one of the ones that we looked at. But even if that is the one that your mind would jump to initially, I'm sure you can find more than one to to use. So um, to find one that is encouraging to you and has a promise of God. Secondly, you're going to identify what God requires of you or where he wants you to meet him to access the contents of this promise. So what you have to do or where you have to be to access the content of this promise. And sometimes that requires you to look outside of just the verse of the promise. So look at the pro the verse above or below to see if there are actions or positions that God requires of us to be in. And then lastly, name one daily thing that you are going to do to achieve this. So we want to, we want to think of, as I said, the idea of pills. The reason all of these things were established as pills is because for the most part, pills are taken daily, sometimes twice or three times a day. That is the idea that we want to reinforce. Not having these things arbitrarily up in the air. These are things that we need to do daily. We need to look at our blessings presently daily. We need to look at the things God has brought us through and his past providence daily. We need to reassure ourselves of the things that God can do for us if we do things for ourselves daily. That's the that's the pill. That's the pill point daily. So select a scripture that includes a promise. Identify where or what God requires you to do or be, and then name one daily thing that you're going to do. So we have, you have five, you have six more minutes. Um, you can start now. If you don't finish, that's fine, because we're going to, we're going to share it. We're going to go through this together on Tuesday. So um, please, take the five minutes we have left to start. Um, and then when we are finished, I'll just give you the password for next week. And then we'll hand, we'll hand over to announcements. Take these next five minutes to start. All right. So we're out of time for today. As I said, um, if you're not complete the exercise as yet, do not lose heart. You have all of the rest of today, tomorrow, and before Bible class time on Tuesday to complete it. And we will share this course and of course points will be given as per usual for for completion. Um. The password for next class is Grazer's Grief. Grazer's Grief, that's G R A Z E R apostrophe S grief. That's a password for next class. Um, thank you for your participation. As per usual, David, thank you for the challenging questions. Um, hoping that some clarity was provided there. And if not, that as we continue to study further clarity will be provided. Um, we'll hand over now. I don't know if Engel is by computer, if he can finish the announcements. Or somebody can provide the announcement screen and I'll run through it. All right, thanks, Ron. Um. So yes, uh, our gospel meeting, simply entitled Simply Christians starts on the thirteenth of December, which I believe is if today is the sixth, then is next week Sunday. Yes, six plus seven is thirteen. So next week, Sunday, our gospel meeting begins. Our speaker, Brother C L Thomas, will be speaking on the subject, why Jesus, why Christianity and why baptism? Starts at seven P M. The same Zoom link, please, encouraging us to send out the flyer to invite our friends, um, invite our neighbors, invite our colleagues so that we can, we can allow them access to God's word. Um, navigating life we had on yesterday. Um, Brother Andre did an excellent job, went through ten, ten steps. Um, I remember exactly what the entitlement of the steps were, but I know that it was about um, facilitating or being a better partner in marriage. Excellent, excellent advice, very, very, um. When I, when I was listening, I thought, boy, Brother Andre need a show, a talk show or something of the sort. Um, because this is, this is very powerful stuff. Um, it will continue, not Saturday coming, but the Saturday after six thirty. Um, our closing drive, collection period continues um, till the twelfth of December, which is Saturday. Um, drop offs are on Mondays, Wednesdays and Saturdays, nine AM to twelve PM. So um, this is the last week in which collection will be taking place. If you still have things pack up, if you still have things that you plan to go and buy to drop off, please get it done Monday, Wednesday or Saturday. Or if those days can't work, please call someone from the benevolence team and they will facilitate it. If you don't know who's on the benevolence team, you can ask Brother Rowan or Evangelist. Um, or watch night service, the thirty first of December, the last day of twenty twenty. Let us run twenty twenty with fervor whilst giving God thanks for all of the blessings that he has given us throughout the year. The fact that we have reached that point in and of itself is a tremendous blessing. Numerous people have lost their lives this year. Let us end the year with Thanksgiving and then let us kick off the year with praise. January ten to thirteen, we'll have our Kickstarter Gospel Meeting, seven PM nightly. The speakers are Brother Michael Roberts, Brother Dave Osborne and Brother Sheldon Shirley. Same Zoom link. Um, I believe the flyer for this one has been sent out as well. So you probably don't want to send it out until we finish our December thirteen um crusade, but after that we'll start advertising our Kickstarter Gospel Meeting. Um, theme, Out of Darkness Into the Sun. Um, continue to pray for consolation, strength and courage for the Endala family as they mourn the passing of Brother Pascal Endala. Um, pray for us as a church family as well as we deal with that loss. It it is, it is hard to to look past and we pray to God for the strength to be able to endure this loss. Um, also remember Sister Marshall in your prayers as she lost her sister. Um, birthdays, okay, also have quite a few birthdays today. So Brother Sean, give me Sean's birthday, speaking to the future. Sean's birthday is today. Um, Sister Samantha's birthday is today and Gabrielle's birthday is on Friday. Um, also have a lot of, oh, a lot of anniversary. Hold on. Engel and Tommy and and Sister Alvy and Trevor have the same anniversary date. Okay. Interesting information there. So anniversaries, the Browns, the Smiths and the Marshalls have their anniversaries this week, Tuesday for the Browns and Smiths and Friday for the Marshalls. So let us, we're going to sing happy anniversary to them. And also remember to call them, to tell them happy anniversary on those dates. Tommy, hoping that you'd be fully recovered to your natural health by then. If not, Engel, you have extra work cut out for you. Um. So we're going to sing happy birthday to Sean, Samantha, Sister Samantha and Gabrielle. And we're going to sing happy anniversary after to those who are um, who have anniversary this week. All right. One, two, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Sean, Samantha and Gabrielle. Happy birthday to you. May the good Lord bless you. May the good Lord bless you. May the good Lord bless you. Happy birthday to you. Happy anniversary to Uno. Happy anniversary to you. Happy anniversary, Engel and Tommy, Trevor, Alia, Winfrey and Frances. Happy anniversary to you. May the good Lord bless all of you. May the good Lord bless all of you. May the good Lord bless the six of you. Happy anniversary to you. Wishing everyone a wonderful week.
Thank you, Stephen.
No, no problem. You're most welcome. Sister Smith, David, um, remember whatever food put down for Sean, just put aside mine. And everybody else enjoy the rest of the day. I don't know if Sister Samantha is here. No, I'm sure I saw either right iPod or something of the sort, but bless up yourself over in London. Um, enjoy the rest of your day, everyone.